Good evening and welcome to the June 17, 2025 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. I'm Mayor Salim Nees and this evening's hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom. We're also broadcasting live on MITV Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. Council members, please have your microphones turned off for roll call. City Clerk, Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Waiker?
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Here.
And Mayor Nees?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're on Zoom, please turn off your video.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zimmerman, last time I asked you to leave was because you were disrupting council chambers. I expect the audience is quiet unless it's during public testimony, and that's your last warning.
Yes, my brother.
Okay, so that's your second time. I'm not going to tolerate another outburst from you, sir.
No problem.
Okay.
You can give me trespass any time.
Okay. I'm going to leave that to Chief Bennett behind you. Please step outside. Please step outside. Sir, I've warned you multiple times on this. We've had this problem with you before. Look, you disrupting our proceedings. I'll take a recess if you want to be removed.
That's no problem. I go to the standby.
Okay. We're going to be in recess for two minutes while Mr. Zimmerman is removed. Please step outside. We now move to approval of tonight's agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? It's your second.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Androl. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mayor Nees?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Apologies, but you were not online tonight, so I don't know what we're voting for.
This Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum moved to approve the agenda, and it was seconded by Councilmember Androl.
Thank you. Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
And Councilmember Waiker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, agenda's approved, and we move to City Manager Report with City Manager Jesse Bond.
Good evening, City Council. It is Tuesday, June 17, and Casey will assist me with driving the deck. Council, just a look ahead. Your next council meeting is Tuesday, July 1. We typically only have two council meetings in July before we break for the August recess. That is still the anticipated plan for the summer. As for boards and commissions, just to note that the Planning Commission meeting on June 25 was canceled. I do know we have board and commission meetings over the summer. All of the updated dates are available on our website. Next slide. Just a short number of updates this evening. Wanted to feature this. I think it's important to acknowledge the work that YFS does out in our community and in our schools. Recently, they participated in an event at the high school. It was a summer kickoff. And while summer can be a time of great memories and a lot of fun, it can also be a period of stress for the youth in our community. So the YFS staff joined together to reinforce important messages about mental health, drug and alcohol prevention, making safe choices over the summer, and ensuring that our youth know where to go when they need support. So thanks to the YFS staff for being out there and for the high school for continuing to host us at these events. Switching gears a little bit, those are the newly surfaced Luther Burbank pickleball courts. Really amazing. They look outstanding. We got lucky with Mother Nature and were able to finish our surfacing and striping work at the courts a little bit ahead of schedule, and they are officially open for play. The last item on our project list is some restoration work on the Summer in the Wetlands mural, which kind of runs around the wall of that court. I do want to mention, and you might already be hearing about this, the courts are in extraordinarily high use, which means we're already starting to have some issues. We've had some arguments down at the courts. We've had some unofficial, non-sanctioned tournaments happen and lots of other things. So we were anticipating some of this, and some of it is kind of some new issues. The recreation team is working on operational policies, including a better way to sign up for court use, and we'll be working with the Parks Commission on rolling all of that out. So more to come, mostly a positive news story. Anytime you drop down at Luther Burbank, I guarantee every single court will be in use. It's been really busy. All right, next slide. The Town Center Parking Facility, this is the new parking facility and right-of-way connection at the former Tully's Coffee Site. We don't have a name for this facility yet, so we're calling it Town Center Parking Facility. We are really close to the finish line. We've, if you've been by there, the pavement's down, the striping's in, the curbs are in. The landscaping won't be installed until this fall. That's the better time to do our planting, to ensure that those plants and everything survives. So a look, a little bear through the summer. The timing for opening, I just got this update right before I walked in the door. It's looking like right after summer celebration. We should have everything done on the construction site and the new parking signs in. So we're pretty excited about that opening, and we'll be rolling out communications to the Mercer Island community, excuse me, about the new parking facility. All right, next slide. Sewer line upgrade. Counsel, I just want to acknowledge, although this isn't on the slide, we have had some really considerable traffic challenges in Town Center. We work really hard with all of our partners to coordinate road closures. Unfortunately, when King County had to come back and redo some of the work, it added a road closure right out here on North Mercer Way that's really made things challenging. So we're getting close to being done. They're getting close to being done with that. We anticipate all of this kind of wrapping up here the week of, I think it says the week of June 30. So we're getting close. And watch your email, because King County has been sending pretty regular updates on the sewer line project. Next slide, please. Just some heads-up things for your calendar. A reminder, this Thursday, June 19, from 12 to 3 at Merciedale Park, we'll be holding a Juneteenth community celebration. Music, food, ice cream, face painting, and a lot more. Very family-friendly. We have lots of partners that will be there as well, including representatives from the high school and the 88.9 The Bridge radio station. Counsel, a reminder that our city facilities are closed and staff are off for the holiday on Thursday, but the community center will be open from 10 to 6. This is part of our new strategy, where we do keep the community center open on most holidays now for community use. All right, next slide, please. Field Day, June 28, so a little more than a week from now, our emergency management volunteers will be out at Luther Burbank Park. That's June 28 from 10 to 2. The Mercer Island radio operators will be on hand to demonstrate how they use their radios, their ham radios during an emergency. It's a really good time to go out, learn about the equipment, and the important role they play in an emergency. A note, we'll be talking a little bit later tonight about the PSM facility, and we will have a ham radio operator room as part of that facility. Next slide, please. National Night Out, August 5. We are giving you an early heads-up. We know this is right after Seafair Weekend. We will be hosting National Night Out at the City Hall Parking Lot, which is where the police trailers are housed now with food trucks, touch-a-truck, touch-a-truck activities and more. Thanks to Pagliacci for partnering with us to provide food for the participating neighborhoods. So if you have a neighborhood that's going to be hosting a National Night Out event, we encourage you to contact us at our website and let us know where you'll be. Our public safety folks are going to do their best to get around and visit all of the neighborhoods. All right, some good news. I just wanted to follow up on an incident actually from a few weeks ago and give a special shout-out to our Marine Patrol Unit. They train for lots of emergencies, and in this case, it was a small aircraft that crashed into Lake Washington just off of the Renton Municipal Airport runway. That is a section of lake that we patrol. Our Marine Patrol Division joined forces with the Renton Fire Department to rescue the pilot and the passenger, who were remarkably uninjured. The aircraft was then stabilized and removed from the lake. So again, just a huge acknowledgement to our Marine Patrol Unit for their response to this emergency. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is appearances. City Clerk, is there anyone signed up for appearances this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to consent agenda, which contains AB 6705, June 10, 2025 payroll certification, AB 6706, certification for claims paid May 1, 2025 through May 15, 2025, City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting Minutes of June 3, 2025, AB 6707, Juneteenth Proclamation Number 362, AB 6709, New Dwellings and Existing Buildings HB 1042, and Title 19, MICC Ordinance Number 25C-12, Second Reading, and AB 6710, 2025 Residential Street Overlay Bid Award. Council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Androl, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Councilmember Waiker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Nees?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion passes. Our first item of regular business is AB 6711, continuance of the April 15 Public Hearing on the 26 through 31, the 2026 through 2031 Transportation Improvement Program. The public hearing is now open as of 5:11 PM. Individuals who register with the City Clerk before 4:00 PM today may make public comment on this. You'll be called by name. Waste your turn to speak. Speak audibly. State your name and city of residence for the record. Leave your comments to three minutes. City Clerk, is there anyone signed up for public testimony tonight?
Mr. Mayor, no one signed up to speak during the public hearing this evening.
Okay. Since there's no further testimony this evening, the public portion of this hearing is closed as of 5:12 PM, and Council will return to this item at the end of the agenda. Our next item of regular business is AB 6714, Approval of Agreement for Acquisition of Real Property by Eminent Domain, and we welcome City Manager Jesse Bond.
Good evening, City Council. Mr. Mayor, you moved a little bit too fast for me. Robbie, yes. Before I cover the really high level, the details of this agreement, I wanted to share with you just a map of the property that we're acquiring. I'll have Robbie walk us through that.
Test, test.
Good evening, Council. Robbie Cunningham Adams, your senior management analyst. So on the screen is a kind of a simple graphic showing the relation of the building we are acquiring, the 9655 building directly adjacent to the old City Hall building. As a reminder, there's kind of two buildings on that parcel. We are only acquiring the building on the south end. We are not acquiring the one on the north that has Mercer Island Pediatrics. Another photo. This is just a Google or a street view. It's a 22,000-foot commercial office space building that will not have a tenant by the time we acquire the building. We'll go over this in a little more depth, but we, in the next agenda item, we're going to be discussing how the 9655 building will be kind of flowing and connecting to the PSM facility project. I guess I can pause there if there's questions or other things to discuss.
Okay. That's the last slide for this. Counsel, any questions? Okay. Not seeing any questions. Counsel, is there a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement for acquisition of real property by eminent domain substantially in the form attached as Exhibit 1, as well as other related documents anticipated in the agreement to complete the described acquisition except a condemnation ordinance? So moved.
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Androl. Any discussion? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Waiker?
Aye.
Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Councilmember Androl?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Nees?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB 6712, Approval of Public Safety and Maintenance Facilities Schematic Design and Integration of the 9655 Building, and we welcome again City Manager Jesse Bond.
All right. Good evening, Council. Thank you for your patience while we all moved up front here to the table. Tonight, I am joined with both members of our consulting team and our staff team for a follow-up presentation on the public safety and maintenance facility. Our focus tonight is primarily to revisit the issues that you raised at the last meeting. I will, I think we have an agenda here on the next slide if we want to. There we go. A couple things. We're going to do a little deeper dive on. I've asked Northwest Studio to follow up on the questions that we received on the finishes of the building. I think sometimes when we present renderings, it's hard to understand exactly what you're looking at in those images, so we're going to touch on that. Lane Summergrin is here, our Deputy Director of Public Works, to talk more about how the operations, building and yard will function. We have a follow-up on the 1% for art question, a few slides on the integration with the 9655 building that we just referenced in the previous, with the previous agenda item, and then some additional information on formation of a pro and con committee in anticipation of your bond measure ordinance in July. We'll round it out with what we anticipate is the bond measure timeline and the project timeline. All right. With that, I will turn the deck over to Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. So this evening, we'll walk through the PSM facility materials that are included in the schematic design package and form part of the cost estimate package for the facility. These focus on simple, durable, and cost-effective materials. And just as a note, material selections during this phase are preliminary, and they're used primarily to identify project performance requirements and inform early cost estimating. In later phases, those materials will be subject to an iterative review with city staff and city council for final selections. We'll run through a series of surfaces and conditions. The first, on the exterior ground and floor surfaces for the facility. These surfaces are primarily striped asphalt and striped concrete, in keeping with the nature of the equipment materials and staff that are operating on these surfaces. The facility's structure is proposed as mass timber. This is proposed for overall weight reduction and foundation savings, and the prefabrication of components to reduce onsite labor, time required for assembly. Mass timber is also regionally sourced and regionally fabricated. The exterior cladding, which is a critical component for a facility like this, is proposed as box-rib panels. These are, this is a high-strength material with resistance to harsh weather conditions, impact, and corrosion, and it requires little to no maintenance over time. Exterior doors and windows are proposed as both aluminum storefront systems for specified locations for windows and doors at the PSM building. Exterior doors, the operations building, however, including the overhead doors, would be made from steel for greater impact resistance. Facility roofing would be comprised of a thermoplastic polyethylene, which is commonly known as TPO roofing. This is a long-lasting membrane that is highly resistant to UV radiation, heat, and chemicals, and TPO's reflective properties help reduce energy costs by reflecting sunlight. This is often the material that you see on Amazon warehouses or other very large structures. Interior to the PSM building, we're looking at a very limited palette of materials that include painted drywall, concrete floors, either jute or cocamat floor tiles, aluminum storefront petitions at offices and conference rooms, and exposed structural elements and exposed building systems. The operations building is even simpler. Those interior finishes are comprised of exposed structure of mass timber with insulated tilt-up cross-laminated timber panels, and the ground floor is exposed concrete with high-impact-resistant tri-wall.
All right. We didn't include all that information in the agenda bill that came together just prior to this presentation based on the questions that we had received. So before we move on to the follow-up on the operations, building, and yard, did you have any questions on that? I know I just sprung it on you, and if not, I will be adding this PowerPoint to the website so that you can go back and look at it and feel free to follow up with me separately.
Perfect. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, can you back up one slide, please? The mass timber walls surprise me, and maybe I just don't know the definition of mass timber, but is this like six-by-sixes or something? Stacked on top of each other? What is this?
Oh, no. These are more in the neighborhood of 12 to 18 by 24 to 30. They're very, they're the equivalent of, you know, if you've seen a lot of older warehouses that were made of tilt-up concrete panels. This is essentially the current version of a tilt-up panel made out of insulated wood, which is infinitely lighter, much simpler, and faster to erect.
And so is it, mass timber, these are not solid beams? Are they somehow, you know, hollow structural things? What are they?
You could think about this a bit like large-scale plywood. With, so the cross-laminated timber, you might have a six-inch-thick panel comprised of three layers each, or four layers each, or an inch and a half layer. So they're very, very robust, very, very thick plywood with preset insulation on the outside of those, to which a waterproof membrane can be applied, and then the box-rib panels can be applied as a rain screen.
Do you have a cross-section of those you could share with the council at some point, so I can see what it looks like?
We could follow up with that.
Okay. And I take it this is less expensive and/or more durable than just concrete?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Council? Not seeing any. Maybe we can move on.
All right. Elaine, the floor is yours.
I'll jump in, just to start with an overview leading into the PSM facility, focusing on the operations, building, and the yard.
Do you want to click twice and see if we have?
Sorry, I'm getting a blank screen here.
Mr. Mayor, may we have five minutes? Our deck is not working.
Okay. Council will be in recess for five minutes, starting at 5:23. Okay. Welcome back to our regularly scheduled City Council meeting. We're on AB 6712, which is Approval of the Public Safety Maintenance Facilities Schematic Design and Integration of the 9655 building, and we will return to City Manager Jesse Bond.
Thank you, and I appreciate the brief recess while we worked on our side deck. We have it back live now. So Aaron, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We'll continue with a review of the PSM facility's operations, building, and yard. For reference, this aerial photograph shows the conditions on the existing project site with 36th Street to the north and Southeast 40th Street to the south, locating the former City Hall, temporary NYPD trailers, and the operations building and the lower upper yards. This diagram highlights the existing Public Works Department buildings and sheds in gray that house materials, tools, small equipment, vehicle maintenance, and maintenance shop spaces that must be accommodated in the operations building identified in the blue outline. The site plan illustrates the site layout for facilities and operations for the proposed PSM facility, with the operations building located in the center, center lower portion of the slide. This diagram lists the primary functions within each of these buildings. The PSM building and the operations building do not house the same functions. Each building is planned to meet the needs of the function- Each building is planned to meet the needs of the functions or city departments outlined below. And where the PSM building houses the police department, emergency operations center, customer service counter, public works offices, IT and GIS, and shared workspaces, the operations building focuses on housing warehouse, the warehouse and supplies, the warehouse office, small equipment, tools, emergency storage, and workshops, restrooms for staff, emergency rent stations, select vehicles and heavy equipment, as well as infrastructure supplies. It also includes maintenance bays and the maintenance shop and office.
All right, so before we jump into looking at the detailed functions of the operations building and the yard, I thought it might be useful to just go through a quick overview of what Public Works Operations does. What does this team of people do, about 50 people? And, you know, I'll start right in. They maintain the city's water distribution infrastructure and all of the parts and pieces that go with it, and also monitoring our water quality and ensuring that it meets standards. Also, the operations team performs maintenance on our sewer mains and all of the infrastructure that's needed to transfer our wastewater off of the island for treatment. The third utility is the stormwater system, which does convey all of the runoff from streets and storm drains and catch basins out into Lake Washington. And then, you know, on the side of that is responding to any spills that may contaminate that stormwater, so cleaning up accidental discharges into the stormwater system. In addition, the Public Works Operations Team also maintains all of the city parks, and this doesn't just include our developed parks that have ballfields and playgrounds and restrooms, but also all of our trails and open spaces, about 481 acres in total. The team manages the urban forest and also the natural resources, doing all of the tree care on all of the public land in the city, and then also doing restoration in our open spaces. The team maintains all of the public roads and all of the rights-of-way along the sides of the roads. That includes all of our pavement markings, our signage, trimming back roadside vegetation, and dealing with street issues. And then also maintaining all of our city-owned and managed facilities. Lastly, the things that are a little more behind the scenes. So the city performs routine maintenance and repairs on its entire fleet, which includes about 170 city-owned vehicles and pieces of large equipment. Also, our warehouse, which is central for all city staff, it's where all deliveries are received and really where all the supplies are kept for all of our field crews. The Public Works Operations Team also responds to any emergencies that come up, most notably maybe our weather-related emergencies, snow, ice, windstorms, clearing debris from roads, and then supporting all the traffic control needed for that. Lastly, I just want to mention that the operations team is responsible also for responding to all service requests that come in from residents. So this is evaluating them, triaging them, and making sure that they get work orders associated with them so that we can resolve them as quickly as possible. Now, how does this translate to the proposed PSM facility, in particular, the operations building and the yard? This facility really needs to be able to function 24 hours a day in all-weather conditions all year, really the ability to respond at any time. The proposed facility was really designed to create efficiencies within those operations, and this was done through a series of many, many discussions and meetings with not just our field staff and our management, but really everyone who takes part in operations to really understand where the pinch points are, where the challenges are to operations currently with our current Public Works facility and yard. Those increased efficiencies really do translate to faster response times to service requests, making sure that we have those very reliable public services, and ultimately lowering operating costs when we can be more efficient with our time. I just want to highlight, as we go through the different functions of the building, how those efficiencies can be realized within those different pieces of those facilities. So I'll be pointing those out really at the end of each section.
We'll start by looking at the lower floor of the operations building. The ground floor of the building equals about 10,000 gross square feet, with an additional 3,500 gross square feet of covered exterior storage. This floor houses the warehouse, workshop space, the emergency operations center storage, warehouse manager's office, and staff restrooms and rent stations. Rooms for mechanical, electrical, and water services, IT and communications equipment, are located on this ground floor in the rear of the operations building, so embanked into the hillside as shown on this plan. The first portion of this lower floor plan is the unenclosed staging and storage area, which is located on the ground floor. This area is for items that should be protected but do not need to be indoors, for temporary loading and receiving, like after-hours receiving, and fabrication or fitting of large items that don't need to be done inside the shop itself.
So we've provided a list here of different items and activities that might take place in this area, in this open staging area, and we'll show some photos of our existing facility and how those things are currently stored. But these really are, like Erin said, things that don't need to be protected, but they do need to be readily accessible to our crews. Some examples, we have all of our traffic management devices. These are things that we use on a daily basis to, you know, for construction projects, for traffic control, and also you can see the barricades, the larger barricades on the right side. It also includes items like manhole covers and collars also. Those don't need to be stored inside or climate-controlled, they can be stored outside and easily loaded into a truck. This also includes these light poles you see on the right, very awkward shape for storing, and so putting them out there will actually improve their lifespan so that we can get them back installed. You also see here large bulky items like bike racks and soccer goals, lacrosse goals, things that maybe are only used seasonally and need to be stored for the rest of the year.
The next space that we look at is located within the warehouse, and this is a space that is reserved for the storage of tools and small equipment. This space is located so that it's readily accessible from the primary vehicle parking area and the loading and unloading zone just to the south of this warehouse space.
I promise you I won't read through this list of tools and small equipment, but it's pretty extensive, and I think maybe what's worth pointing out on this list is that it's a tremendous breadth of items and probably, you know, the things that we own the most of. Just to call out a few, things like blowers or weed eaters that the city has just a tremendous amount of, so that we can make sure that all of our crews have access to them. So for example, we have about 25 or more blowers currently. So while each of these items is listed singularly, it does expand exponentially as you get into those numbers. For example, if we look further into the personal protective gear listed here, there's a whole list of different types of items that need to be stored for our crews to have access to. This map right here shows the existing conditions and where we're storing all of our tools and small equipment. And you can see that it's really quite spread out around the campus. Most of these are in outbuildings, and some of them are within the actual office building, really just putting them where we can find space for them, and they're large numbers. Just some quick photos here of our tools and equipment. On the left side, you see, you know, us just putting things where we can fit them, and alternately on the right side, you know, keeping them really orderly, especially our power equipment that we need ready access to. You can see here the Parks Maintenance Tool Shed. They keep it very tidy, but it's a large number of hand tools. You can see on the ground on the right, a fair amount of shears, pruners, hedge trimmers, all manner of different tools.
Adjacent to this tool and small equipment storage area is the primary warehouse space, which is used for the storage of materials, components, consumables, and maintenance and cleaning supplies. This space is also readily accessible from the primary vehicle parking area and the loading and unloading zone just to the south of the building. This view illustrates the interior of the warehouse within the operations building. The warehouse, as proposed, would have a 16-foot-high-to-bottom-of-structure clearance, allowing for very high racking accessible through forklift. The interior tool and material storage spaces, like we said, open directly onto that covered exterior loading zone, as you can see in this image, to promote more efficient operations as crews access material and equipment.
Our warehouse is really the hub of field operations. This is where all of the crews go to get all the supplies that they need. We have a very extensive list. Actually, the number on here is a little bit off. We actually have over 3,500 unique items that are stored in our warehouse currently, really to meet the needs not just of our Public Works Operations Teams, but also other departments within the city, including police. And it's just a tremendous variety. Here we have some existing photos. On the left, you can see janitorial supplies. These supply our parks restrooms, as well as all of our facilities. On the right, you can see just a wall of water fittings that are needed. We need to have those on hand in case we need to do repairs or an installation on short notice. On the left, you can see a lot of cleaning supplies for our maintenance and custodial crews, and on the right, some of those larger pipe fittings for our water distribution system. Some of the PPE is on the left here, which is a lot of work gloves on the top and nitrile gloves on the bottom. We go through a tremendous amount of these to keep our crews safe. And on the right side, you can see all of our signage that is waiting to be deployed. We like to have those on hand for when signs need to be replaced. I think you probably saw at the beginning of the slideshow, we currently have over 4,500 street signs out already, and so as you imagine, they need to be replaced pretty frequently.
Adjacent to the warehouse, and included on this lower level of the building, is a workshop space. This hosts a number of functions related to the Public Works Department field crew needs, and it also takes advantage of its adjacency to the warehouse, to the loading and unloading zone, but also to the open staging area that we talked about earlier.
The Public Works Facility currently does not have any workshop space, but that doesn't mean we don't have the need for workshop space. There are a number of different activities that will take place in this space, such as assembling different tools, also furnishings that are going out into parks, small equipment repair that's done by our crews, and as well as, you know, tool repair and painting, which is obviously something that we can't do outdoors during the winter. This picture here is actually of our Parks Maintenance Office, which was once the carpentry workshop. In fact, the entire lower level of the Public Works Building was once different workshops and is now all being used as offices for our staff.
Also located on the ground floor of the building, just adjacent to that shop space, is an office space for up to two staff members, including warehouse manager. Next to this space and near that staff entry on the ground level, we include three restrooms and an emergency rinse and wash station. Also on this level, located the emergency storage operations room. This storage room is readily accessible from loading and unloading zones and the warehouse for direct transport of emergency supplies to the community. Oh, right. And this, as Elaine has gone through, this is an example list of some of the response supplies, the incident registration station supplies, training supplies for volunteers and others, as well as outreach and tabling supplies that are currently stored in the shipping container just outside of this facility. These are two photographs that illustrate those conditions. On the left, we can see that shipping containers, the doors are opened, and then on the right, we can see the emergency supplies stored within the shipping container. It's quite full with narrow access into the shelving.
So before we move on to the upper level of the operations building, I thought it might be useful to go through some of the highlights of the ground floor. So using that covered storage and staging area, really having access to it, easily loading and unloading from vehicles, and what we're finding right now is that we don't have a dedicated space to unload these materials. So a lot of time is spent finding a space or clearing a space for us to put items that we need to store. As I said, small equipment and tools do not have a dedicated space right now. They are located in over 10 different areas around the campus, and so putting them really in one space allows our field crews to be more efficient in getting those tools, getting them into the truck, and moving on. In addition, I do want to point out that storing, especially power equipment, in a dry, climate-controlled environment, will increase the tool lifespan. So really, right now, they're in open buildings where they are exposed to moisture and temperature fluctuations that can decrease their lifespan. The warehouse, one of the things that's most exciting about the proposal is having higher ceilings and wider aisles in the design right now for the warehouse. This really allows us not just to stock more items, but also use a forklift, which, as you can see in the photo on the right, we cannot fit a forklift in there currently, and so getting things on and off those higher shelves is not feasible. The increased storage capacity allows for a lot of different things. One of them is that we can buy larger amounts of items, and what that does is it reduces the cost per item. It also reduces the staff time that's needed to go off-island to buy from retail stores, reducing that travel time. And then also it increases our stock of, we can have them on hand for emergency response. Again, having this adjacent to loading and unloading is a really big topic for us, considering where our warehouse is currently located and the congestion associated. Again, the workshop, which we don't have right now, would really eliminate the need for our crews to use the mechanic bays, which is really the only open space that's available during the winter right now to take care of some of those activities. And it's an exciting prospect to have a year-round workshop that can be used by all of our crews.
We'll transition to the upper floor of the operations building. The second floor of the building is about 19,000 gross square feet. This floor houses high bay vehicle and large equipment storage, maintenance bays, the maintenance shop, and operations office, as well as staff restrooms, and again, emergency rent stations and waste. This view illustrates the interior of the vehicle maintenance and large equipment storage area within the operations building. On the right-hand side of this view, you can see a partial view of the maintenance bays with one of the VAC trucks lifted up for servicing. On the two-side walls, you can see cantilever rack storaging that's used to hold some of the piping and large timbers that we'll talk about in a moment. This also includes some very large aisle widths for vehicle maneuvering, loading and unloading, but as well as mounting of certain equipment on top of these larger vehicles using the overhead gantry that you can see in this image. The first portion of this upper floor plate that we'll talk about is the large equipment storage area. This area is used for the storage of large equipment. It's readily accessible from both the loading zone and the trailer parking area for direct transport.
So again, we have a list here of a lot of the large equipment that the Public Works Operations Teams currently use. They are currently being stored in a variety of places, which I will show you on a map here. So this is a combination of being stored in these open-sided sheds and also being stored out in the open where they are exposed to the elements, as you can see in the lower yard. We have quite a bit of different equipment parked out there because of lack of space, and that means that, you know, they can be a little harder to access when we need them. So to run through a few of those, on our utility team, there's a need for an easement machine, and on the right side, you see a small vector, and this is used for our utility team to be able to get into tighter spaces than our large vector truck can access for utility repairs. On the left side here, you can see our turf sweeper, which is used by our Parks Maintenance Crew on ballfields, and on the right, you can see a valve exercising machine that is used by our utility team to keep our water system in good shape. On the left, you can see riding mowers. We have quite a few riding mowers, and they do take up space. We have quite a few riding mowers, and they do take up space and need to be accessed relatively quickly to be able to get onto trailers each day. We also have on the right a power harrow used for turf, an aeravator on the left used for turf. You can see one of our utility vehicles on the right, which are used by our Parks Maintenance Team. On the left, you see one of our right-of-way bays, which has quite a bit of large equipment in it. It has our variable messaging boards, our large water tank for watering, and also one of our salter spreaders for treating icy roads. As well as on the right there, you can see that there are two spreaders that are currently staged in our lower yard. On the left, you see our only chipper, which we love and take good care of. It does sit in the lower yard, and on the right, you can see one of our trenching machines. An air compressor, again, on the right, more ball field equipment, our top dresser, a rolling compactor, and then snow plows. We've talked about snow plows before. We have quite a few of them. I believe at current count, it is six different snow plows or seven different snow plows that we have ready to deploy when needed.
Adjacent to the area we were talking about for large equipment storage and on the western wall, the operations building upper floor incorporates cantilever rack storage on two of these high bay side walls.
So these cantilever racks will be really helpful for items that can be hard to store and can take up a lot of floor space. Some of the, we've listed some of the items here that currently are stored on the ground that would be very good candidates for these cantilever racks, including pipes and timbers. Here you can see on the left, we have some storm drain pipe that is laying down in the yard. On the right side, we have some playground equipment that, when it's ready, when the site is prepared, will be sent out to a park to replace a playground, but it does need to be stored somewhere in the meantime, and the issue here is that it could be subject to, you know, vehicle damage or other types of damage before it's deployed.
On the opposite side of the large equipment storage, the upper floor includes parking area for up to eight oversized vehicles.
We've spoken of these vehicles quite a bit, I believe, up till now. We've talked about how these are some of our highest value fleet assets, and they are very temperature sensitive. We have to prevent them from freezing lest there be damage to some of the fittings and the hoses in them. And here's just a few pictures. We've mentioned our two vectors, but also our sweeping truck, and a number of other vehicles that have equipment mounted on them that is temperature sensitive.
Adjacent to the vehicle parking and storage area, the upper floor includes the department's vehicle maintenance bays and the maintenance shop. These maintenance bays and shop service and maintain the over one-hundred-and-seventy vehicles and pieces of equipment that are owned by the city of Mercer Island.
On the left here, you can see our existing mechanic shop. It does have four bays, and it has two bays with lifts in it currently. On the right, you can see some of the storage that's being used for different supplies that are used in repairs and maintenance of our vehicles, and those are stored in the shop.
Like the lower floor of the operations building, this floor also includes an office space for up to two staff members for the mechanic. Next to this space, this floor includes three restrooms, a cleanup and laundry room, and also an emergency rinse station and restrooms.
So just a quick overview of the upper floor. I think you saw a lot of good examples of our large equipment storage, and those clearly take up a fair amount of space in our existing campus. And really, these things should be stored in a dry environment, in a climate-controlled environment. Some of these pieces are higher value, and we do want to preserve them as long as possible and increase their longevity. Again, not having to hunt for where this equipment is stored or find a place for where it should be stored will really save our staff a lot of time knowing exactly where something is at all times and that it's accessible. We don't need to move vehicles to get to it. I think, I highlight this a little bit later on, but I do want to mention that having it inside and accessible makes the installation of that equipment much faster. And I also want to say that it's also much safer for our staff to be able to hook up that equipment in a well-lit space that is not freezing. So on to the cantilever rack storage. Again, we don't have anything like this right now, and getting those things off of the ground means that we have more space to store other things like large equipment. This protected parking for oversized vehicles, really having those dedicated bays so we aren't using our mechanic's bays like we currently do will be just a huge asset to our mechanic who won't need to compete for space. And same with the workshop, really having dedicated bays that are only used for, you know, emergency repairs, routine repairs, routine maintenance.
Shifting from the operations building and looking at the Public Works Yard. As we spoke about in a prior council meeting, the PSM facility is divided up into five zones. The Public Works Yard, the lower yard, is included in Zone Four, the upper yard is included in Zone Five, and these house different functions. In the lower yard, we've located the fueling stations, like water station, diesel, gasoline, propane, as well as de-icing, the raw materials, and a lay-down area for capital projects. And the upper yard is located, the decant facility, with street sweep debris, organics, waste, and recyclables. Focusing in on the lower yard, this diagram illustrates that yard. The area of the yard is about twenty-nine thousand square feet. It is home to the vehicle fueling stations, de-icing station, facility generators for the entire facility, raw material storage, and capital project storage. This view illustrates the raw material storage bays in the lower yard, covering raw materials, including soil, salt, sand, gravel, and a range of crushed rock sizes that are all used in infrastructure projects, street repair, and park maintenance throughout the city.
In these photos of our existing yard, you can see some of these examples. On the left side, we have our diesel fuel station, which has both diesel vehicle fuel as well as off-road diesel fuel, but we do not currently have any unleaded fuel on the site. On the right side, you can see our, a couple of our few storage bays that are actually covered right now that currently house our salt-sand mixture so that it's ready to go in the winter. We do stockpile that. On the left here, you can see some of our rock bays that carry different-sized gravels that are used in all manner of construction projects. And on the right side, you can see some of the materials that are getting ready to be used in a capital project. They do need a place to be staged so that they're ready to go when construction crews are ready.
This diagram focuses on the upper yard. This area is about thirty-two thousand square feet, and it is home, as we mentioned, to the decant facility, street sweep debris, organics, waste, recyclables, and the dumpsters and bins that are used to transport and transition those materials. This view illustrates the decant facility that's located in the upper yard.
I wanted to just take a second to explain a decant facility. I think this term has been used and maybe not well explained why this is a separate type of a facility. A decant facility really is necessary for any public works crews that's taking care of utilities. So what it is, is it's essentially a covered space that has drainage built in so that we can put in basically wet soils, mud, and debris that's coming in through our vector trucks when they're trying to create, you know, potholes in the ground to access utilities, but also from our street sweeper. And usually, this soil has some types of contaminants in them, maybe from runoff on the road. And so what we need to do is we need to be able to dry out that soil. And so this facility allows those soils to dry out over time, and for that runoff from them to actually be funneled into the sewage system as opposed to the stormwater system, we test that runoff periodically. We're required to, and it does have a fair amount of regulation around it at a decant facility. In this photo, on the left, you can see our existing decant facility. We do have to haul out that dried soil eventually and dispose of it properly. On the right side, you can see our wood waste pile. This is from trees that are removed by the city usually for some defects or decline. On the left side, here, you can see one of our bays that is used for metal recycling. We have quite a number of different recycling bays so that we can put in our signage and other waste that we have, metal waste, so that it can be properly disposed of, and actually, we can get some money back from collecting those materials and recycling them. On the right, you can see some of our large dumpsters, roll-offs that get hauled out. These usually have vegetation in them, or sometimes, like the one on the right, will have construction debris that is hauled off-site. This is for large amounts of waste. In terms of the yard overview, I think that really, there's a couple key points here. One of them is about consolidating where our materials and our waste are stored. Right now, our bays are spread all over around the building, again, where there's space. And there's really no, not a lot of rhyme or reason to where they are, and what that ends up doing is that it creates a lot of congestion in our yard because of that constant loading and unloading. We have pretty narrow drive aisles, and so the way that this facility and the yard layout has been proposed, there's much wider drive aisles so that we can really improve that circulation and keep people moving even when we're loading and unloading those materials. I do want to mention, I said that we do have some fuel on-site, but we do not have unleaded, which is the fuel that's in most of the fleet vehicles. And on-site fueling really will not just eliminate the time that's needed for our crews to go off-site, whether it's to the school district or to a gas station on the island, but it also increases our resilience during an emergency. So this happened recently, I believe it was during the windstorm. We lost power, which then affected commercial gas stations, and I believe the school district also. And so having those on-site means we can control the fuel levels, we can make sure that those are backed up by generators with the city so that we can keep moving during an emergency, and we don't get slowed down by needing to go off-island if we run out of fuel. So additionally, it does reduce the cost for fuel. The vehicle wash, you can see a picture here on the right. This is our current vehicle wash station. It's actually a bay. We're supposed to be able to actually drive into it to wash vehicles so that that runoff can be collected appropriately, but unfortunately, a lot of our vehicles are too large for that, and so having a drive-through configuration for a vehicle wash would just be a huge asset to our fleet. It really streamlines it. It allows that process just to be faster for staff, which will increase the frequency. And ultimately, what that does by reducing our salt and our dirt buildup on vehicles, it increases the life of the vehicle bodies. Lastly, you can see here a photo that I took yesterday, actually, of our, from above our warehouse, which just really conveys, this is very typical parking configuration. We have a delivery coming in, and just a lot of vehicles that are also blocking our equipment bays. And so circulation really is maybe one of the biggest factors in terms of a lack of efficiency in this area. We just do a lot of waiting or pulling vehicles out of the way currently just to keep moving. So that layout, I also want to note, increases visibility around the yard, which not just is good for driver safety, but also for pedestrian safety since we have so many people working in these areas. Before we finish out, I wanted to just give two really brief examples of some operational flows as I see them with the new layout. So two really typical operational flows. The first one is our Parks Maintenance Team. During the growing season, our Parks Maintenance Team is out mowing every single day, usually on riding mowers. And so I thought it might be useful to walk through what that would look like in the new facility. So if the staff come out of the PSM building, they walk to the parking lot and get their vehicle, then they can pull right up to that lower level of the operations building, go inside, get any tools that they need. These might be weed eaters, blowers, hedge trimmers, throw them right in the back of their truck. If they need anything from the warehouse, they're right there. They pull around to the fueling station where they can fill not just the vehicle that they're driving, but also the gas cans they'll need to keep their equipment going. Then they can move over to the back lot behind the operations building where they can hook up a trailer, and once they've hooked that up, drive into the upper level of the operations building where they can drive a riding mower onto the trailer and then proceed out to a park site. Maybe a more, maybe less frequent, but really important flow for us is around snow and ice response. This is usually needed after hours. When we come in to deal with snow and ice, the crews need to remove the snow and ice from our vehicles first because they're parked out in the lot. It takes some time. Usually, the equipment setup is in the dark. It's usually in very cold conditions, and putting the equipment on these vehicles can take, I would say, a minimum of two, but usually three, staff members to get the equipment attached. Reducing that response time would increase the time that would be needed for these crews to just get on the road, which is really our goal, is to get them out on the roads and treating as quickly as possible so that by morning commute or school start, we're ready to go. So in this case, that flow would look like getting a vehicle, again, from that parking lot, proceeding to the fuel station to fill the vehicle so that they can not be interrupted on their route, pull into the upper level to hook up the snowplow, again, in a lighted environment where they can see what they're doing, and they could drive right up onto a snowplow and attach it. The next would be guiding a salt spreader onto the truck bed, using that gantry system to lower it into place. We don't have anything like that currently, and that's where a lot of our staff time is needed. I will note that the way that this is set up really would allow one person to do all of this completely alone and do it safely, and that really allows our crews to get out and crews to get out much faster. Then they would move down to the lower yard, fill up with salt and sand, and then get on their way to road treatment. So with that, I believe we're at the conclusion?
Questions, then?
Yeah, that was a lot. We have different topics to move to, but that was the conclusion of the overview, comprehensive overview of operations side of the house.
That was great. And I'm sure we'll have a few questions. I'm going to get started. You know, I think in the past councils have tried to say, when we're going to do a thing, and then it's going to drive efficiency, how much efficiency, but really, I don't want to get into that. I want to know, since obviously it's way more optimized than what we currently have, what do you do with the extra time that you claw back, right? What does it mean to the workers in the field or the people that are, you know, expecting those services to occur?
So I believe that what it means is us being able to address more things within a day, right? So being able to get to more service requests within a day. As I said, with snow and ice removal, it's being able to run those routes maybe multiple times so that those roads are in really good shape. So it doesn't mean more time sitting around at the end of the day. It means more time to tackle new issues.
That's right. So anyone that's used, you know, a contractor recently, you know, when you pay for a contractor to do a task, you kind of have this daily mobilization, demobilization overhead that just exists where no work's getting done, but people are loading and unloading tools. You know, we do that every day, times all of these workers doing all these different tasks. You know, while there is probably a mathematical way that Councilmember Reynolds might get to on how much savings there is here, the back of the book is we just have more work getting done in the hours of the day that are not spent mobilizing and demobilizing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, Council?
Craig, guys, is he under?
Okay. Councilmember Weinberg?
I was wondering about the lower level where you have the warehouse and the storage of, I believe you said the leaf blowers are being stored down there. of, I believe you said the leaf blowers are being stored down there. So, I was just wondering, since you have concrete up above for where the vehicles are on the second level, how does the ventilation work? Do you have, is there continuous heating and air conditioning and ventilation so that as you bring in a gas-powered item that's still warm from out in the field, that the vapors get blown out of there and don't settle in the room?
Yeah, that's correct. Spaces like this have sort of three ventilation systems. One is climate control. The other is vapor ventilation, which is actually a direct draw-out exhaust ventilation, in other words. And the third is a direct outside air ventilation, so you're constantly moving fresh air into that space at the same rate that you're exhausting.
Okay. And a follow-up question on that. I presume that the indoor spaces have a concrete floor, and because this is partially underground, they have concrete walls as well. So, I presume that the cleaning of that space would be periodic to, I presume when you bring in items from the field, they'll still have, you know, grass or dirt or other things on them. We probably don't wash every mower every day, or maybe we do, but...
Yeah, that's a very good question. So, in facilities like this, there are a number of options. You can either look at sealed concrete floors, or more often, what you find are epoxy polymers that are put down, kind of the garage floor coating, if you will, that make that floor entirely washable, scrubbable, to maintain it in good clean condition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, fabulous presentation. Just a great recap of all the work that's been done in the last few months. As I watch this, it seems like you've thought of everything, but I also realize that I'm completely incompetent to judge what needs to be done. So, I wonder if somebody can comment on the staff engagement in this process. How, just kind of recap, who you asked to say, what do you need, and do you think you addressed those needs?
I can't recall off the top of my head how many meetings we've had, which is to say that we've had a lot. We have had meetings about not just what are the current challenges facing our facility, right? And some of those are about the actual facility itself, and some of them are about that flow of operations, right? Where do you see those slowdowns? And that's happened with our field crews. It's happened with our foremen and our managers on the operations side of the house. So, these are the folks who are living it every single day and frustrated with certain things, and they're very vocal about what those things are. So, those aren't hard to discern. And, you know, I feel like we've been able to, over this period, really hone in on those major issues and really try to address them. I've actually been pretty impressed with the ability to address a lot of those, like I said, those pinch points in operations. But we also have had a lot of management input. Jason and I have been involved in all of those meetings and really talking about what we would like to see and where we see efficiencies also that aren't being met currently.
I will also add, Councilmember Reynolds, that we've been working through this schematic design in real time with all of you, and you have seen the plans evolve. We had the building set back on the lot quite a bit, and a yard in a slightly different configuration. That changed because the staff said, this is not working. And we went back to the drawing board and came to you and said, hey, we need to pull the buildings forward to achieve a more efficient layout. The other thing I want to mention is, I will hope that at any point, if you check in with a public works team member or police department team member, that they will tell you that they have been a part of this process. And that doesn't end tonight. That goes forward as well, because there's so much more design work and refinements still to happen as we get to that 100% final design phase. And that engagement is anticipated to continue because we have a lot of decisions to make. And the most important decision-makers are the people that will be operating in these buildings and on the site.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And getting at it, I'm sure you can imagine, is five years from now when this is done, I don't want anybody saying, oh darn, if only we'd thought of X. But it sounds like there will be few of those. I'm counting on that. Thank you.
Just a quick note about, you know, storage of materials like salt. You know, we store that. You showed the pictures. There is a limited amount of storage of salt. Can you just talk about what happens when you don't have enough salt and we're in the middle of a, you know, extended snow event in the region? You know, where do we have to go to get it, and what do we face?
We, I can't speak to the particulars of who we're going to, and I wouldn't want to, but we have a whole network of folks. And particularly, we work very closely with WashDOT. I will say that our right-of-way manager, who has been doing this for many, many years, understands the rate at which we burn through it and understands what our stock, how long our stockpile is gonna last. So, he's been really great about predicting, you know, when we have to be restocking. And as you can see, you know, in summertime, we have that much, and that's for a reason. Because right now is a time when we can have lots of it in preparation for next winter when there isn't a run on salt and sand, so...
Well, I can remember a time when we had a multi-day snow event, and we ran out of salt. And the outcome of that was somebody had to sit in a line of dump trucks for like eight hours to get salt, and then go back to that line.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you're at that point, just using it as fast as you're collecting it.
Right.
So, there's a lot of efficiency in being able to store, I presume, a larger volume of salt than we currently store in a condition that's better.
Mayor Neese, you're raising a really good point about the storage capacity of this facility. I think it's plus on almost everything. And as an island community, as you all know, we have only ourselves in a serious emergency. But in regional events, like the bomb cyclone that we experienced in November, every city in the Puget Sound region was responding to an emergency. We were all competing for the same resources. The more that we have on-site, even the ability to store like large generators to deploy in the long run, it really helps us with our response and to sustain our community. And I think we've achieved that. That doesn't mean that we can't, you know, we can get three to seven days. We have to keep planning for replenishment. But what we've proposed here is an anticipation that we'll continue to have weather events and need to be fully resourced.
Yeah. I mean, the bomb cyclone was a great example of nobody could get any fuel. And it took days to get power back on on Merceran to get any fuel on Merceran. The other thing that I'm not sure people fully understand, and we should probably talk about it when we talk about the VAC truck, is what a VAC truck does and allows our crews to do. What is the alternative to a VAC truck, and why do we use a VAC truck, and why is it temperature-sensitive?
I may ask Jason to jump on, because Jason has probably had more experience in a VAC truck than I have. But essentially, what it's used to do is to access deep pipes in a very small area. So, by sucking out soil, by jetting water in and pulling that material out. So, what is the alternative? Probably some very uncomfortable hand digging, but I'm not even sure it's possible in a lot of these cases. Jason?
Yeah. So, Elaine summarized what it is. It's a vacuum and pressure washer in one. So, they pressure wash, basically pressure wash a hole, and they suck it out with a giant vacuum, and it goes into a storage tank. So, these are temperature-sensitive because they have a water tank on them, or multiple water tanks. One is a primary water tank to feed that pressure nozzle, that high-pressure nozzle. The alternative to this is a backhoe, usually, or hand tools. But as Elaine referenced, our water and sewer mains tend to be very deep. And with a backhoe, you're talking about, it's an effective tool. However, it's slower. It usually involves a much larger footprint and impact to the area. So, if you're a crew responding to a water main break or sewer repair, with a VAC truck, they can be much more precise, and the repair is actually much, much smaller versus if they use a backhoe. They're cutting up the asphalt, and their excavation is much, much larger. It's just not as precise of equipment anymore. It's still a valuable piece of equipment, but it's used differently than it was perhaps 10 or 15 years ago. The VAC truck has replaced that for most of our ongoing sewer and water repairs.
I will also note, I think it's worth saying that, you know, this infrastructure is very delicate. We don't want to hit it with a backhoe. And the nice part about a VAC truck is that it doesn't do damage to that infrastructure while it's creating that hole. So, when we can use that, it's a much gentler tool.
That's great. And our water mine lines, they don't care what season it is. They break year-round. So, it's, you know, if you're in cold temperatures and there's water mains breaking, having a VAC truck is something that you want to have available. All right. Not sensing any more discussion on this. I want to let Council know that we're gonna have three motions. The first motion is gonna be to direct the city manager to prepare bond ordinance. Then we're gonna deal with the 1% for the arts, and then we're gonna talk about the problem comming committee. So, council asks for a motion to approve the public safety and maintenance facility schematic design, set the project budget at $103,900,000, and direct the city manager to prepare a bond ordinance for first reading at the city council meeting on July 1, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Andrell. Any discussion? Okay. Not seeing any discussion. See, clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Motion passes, and I think we have some slides on the 1% for the arts. That's a good-looking slide.
Oh, yeah. Got even better one here.
Very artistic.
So, council, as a reminder, our meeting two weeks ago, we had a few questions from you all. One of them was, could the city council exempt the public safety maintenance facility project from the 1% for the arts requirement? So, to answer that question, we'll give a little bit of background first. In 1993, the city council adopted an ordinance establishing the 1% for the art and public places fund. So, today, the city has a number of artistic pieces, over 60 works of arts installed throughout public facilities and parks around Mercer Island. So, the 1% fund is established in city code, which requires that all qualifying capital improvement projects to set aside 1% of the total project cost to support permanent public art installations. Qualifying capital improvement projects are defined as projects, this would include buildings, decorative or curative structures, any parks projects, or projects involving the construction, renovation, or repair of public streets, sidewalks, and parking facilities. A typical capital project, a capital improvement project's 1% fund contribution may be used to either integrate a public art project into the capital project itself, or to be transferred to the 1% fund for future uses on other city art installations. The city code also states that the Mercer Island Arts Council shall recommend projects to the city council using the appropriations from the 1% fund. So, this would either be the selection, acquisition, installation of works of art, which could be integrated in the project, or be placed in or about the project in another public facility, repairs and maintenance of existing public art. I think my understanding is, a lot of what we do with the 1% fund is maintaining existing art pieces, and then other project-specific expenses of selection and acquisition. Da-da-da, I won't say the rest of that. So, let's talk about the 1% for the arts program in this project. The PSM facility qualifies under that definition, and so it is required under city code to participate in the 1% for the arts program. So, based on the cost estimate of the construction costs of this building presented to you at our last meeting, there's an estimated $739,000 contribution to the 1% fund. I want to highlight something that wasn't in the agenda bill, thanks to a question by Councilmember Becker. I want to add a little additional clarity to what was in the agenda bill about how this project might be a little different compared to other capital projects. Per city code and under state law, proceeds from a voter-approved bond must be used for the project described in the bond ordinance. So, what this means is that if the 1% for the arts contribution is intended to be used for projects in addition to the PSM facility, that must be explicitly specified in the bond measure ordinance. If, however, the 1% for the arts is collected and intended to only be used for the PSM facility, then no additional reference is required in the bond ordinance, although the project scope should reference arts or cultural arts to ensure this work is in scope. That would mean that we would have $740,000 to find a way to spend on art in this project as currently written. So, council, you asked us if there was a way for us to exempt the PSM facility project from the 1% for the arts requirements. Under current city code, there's not an option for an exemption for this project or other projects. So, adding an exemption would require a change to the city code. Should the city council wish to pursue an exemption for this project or other projects, we have included an optional motion. This would direct staff to prepare an ordinance allowing the city council by motion to fully exempt or cap a project's contribution to the 1% for the arts fund. For example, you could motion us with this code change to either exempt the PSM facility project entirely from the 1% for the arts contribution, or set a cap, say, for example, at $50,000. I just want to remind you, council, we do have existing art pieces at the old city hall, and it's fully the intention of staff to relocate these art pieces in the PSM facility. Exactly how we do that will be determined, you know, a little later in the design process. But that is, so, again, not to say there will be no art at this facility, but we have existing art pieces we want to continue to display, such as the foxes and other pieces. I think that's my last slide. Happy to pause for questions or a motion, if you desire.
Okay. Well, let me start with questions. Are any council questions? Okay. And I will... Councilmember Wyker?
Just real quick, Robbie, how would this work for other projects down the road? Would we have similar authority for any other property owners who wanted to come forward with a request of this nature?
Yeah. As currently written, this motion would direct us to come back to you on July 1, with an ordinance that will allow this council and future councils to either exempt or cap the contribution to any qualifying capital project that the city has. So, you may feel that the PSM facility is a good candidate for an exemption, but there also would give you and future councils the ability to do exemptions or caps on other capital projects, if you so direct staff to.
Okay.
Okay. Council, is there a motion to direct the city manager to prepare an ordinance modifying the 1% for the arts code to allow the city council to fully or partially exempt projects from the 1% for the arts requirements?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Andrell. Any discussion? See clerk, please call the roll. Oh, Councilmember Reynolds?
I'm just gonna comment that I'm gonna be voting no on this. Arts matter. They might matter a lot to our community. It's a large sum of money, but it's a large investment. And I don't think we're ever gonna get around to funding arts unless through mechanisms like this. And I think this is a case where we have to hold our feet to the fire to make sure we do this and make the community a better place.
Okay. I'll just say that I think I'm the longest-serving liaison to the arts council, and we never had a budget that was greater, our balance in the arts fund, more than $70,000. And, you know, just the idea of putting 3/4 of a million dollars into a fund, which is 10x its normal balance, to me, is something that we're gonna have to address before we go to the voters and ask for $100 million. Just my view on it. Okay. City clerk, please call the roll. Oh, Councilmember Becker?
Yeah. I'll just provide my opinion as well. I mean, I was also on the arts council for the last few years. And, I mean, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, because I think unlike some of the other projects, as was expressed in the question, that we have to spend this money specifically on this project. Normally, the money, we could go in other areas in the city. And my concern is spending money on arts in areas that's not public-facing. Like, a significant portion of this project is internal. And I think that the purpose of the 1% fund and for the arts is for the enjoyment of the community. And I don't think that there's a practical way to spend this amount of money on this project in a way that would actually benefit the community a lot.
Well said. All right. Councilmember Weinberg?
So, a question, I guess, is probably for the city manager, is the thing that we're voting on to have the staff come back with a proposal for having an exemption from the 1%, but it's not necessarily saying drop it to zero. It's a proposal that could say drop it to a cap of $50,000 or something like that, so that we would still have some funding for the arts in, as part of this project, but it just wouldn't be 3/4 of a million. Am I understanding that correctly?
There will be two steps coming back on July 1. We will prepare the ordinance that will need to be approved on first reading to be effective pretty quick, before the second reading of your bond measure ordinance. What that ordinance will do, will give you the authority to cap a project. Right now, you don't have that authority. And then we will ask for a second motion directing us to do that on this project. So, there's a sequence of events here that all have to happen in July. I will include at the time my city manager recommendation on where I think that should land, and I'll promise to get that to you for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Robbie, if it'd be possible for the projects, the art pieces of art that we already own that are on the campus, would it be possible to get a list and what we purchase them for?
Yes. So, I grabbed those photos from, we have a storyboard GIS feature on the city website that shows the location, I think, the history of each art piece. So, I don't have all of them memorized. I think there's five or six in city hall, but we can... have all of them memorized. I think there's five or six in city hall, but we can share that link out, if that's helpful. I think it might have the value of the art pieces, too.
Great.
The twin foxes were a gift from our sister city, so some won't have an acquisition cost, but some...
I will also note, as we move forward with the acquisition of the nine-six-five-five building, there will also be an opportunity for art to be placed there.
Great.
Okay. See clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Nay.
And Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that gets us to the last item.
A few more items. We'll start with another discussion on the integration of the nine-six-five-five building. You know, as a reminder, that, as you approved earlier, the city is planning to acquire a twenty-two-thousand-square-foot commercial office building to address critical facility and operational needs, located at nine-six-five-five Southeast Thirty-Sixth Street. Building was constructed in nineteen ninety-eight and shares parcel with the building occupied by Mercer Island Pediatrics. The city has proposed acquiring that southern building for a little over nine million dollars through eminent domain, a legal process necessary to facilitate the creation of two distinct parcels. You saw this image earlier. We've been talking with Northwood Studio, our architectural consultant for the PSM facility, of how we may best integrate these three buildings into a civic campus. They're certainly adjacent to you, right next to each other. On this next slide is sort of an initial design concept of how we would propose to connect the three buildings. What is depicted is a pedestrian connection between the nine-six-five-five building and an existing pedestrian pathway between the PSM building and the operations building. The purchase of this building will be primarily funded through existing city reserves and supplemented by limited external financing. These resources reflect years of responsible budgeting, careful revenue forecasting, prudent spending, meaning no additional taxes or revenue increases are required. Combined with the PSM facility, these buildings will serve as a new home for the departments currently housed in the aging public works building and other departments displaced due to the permanent closure of city hall. Pending approval of the acquisition, we, the city, we expect to take ownership of this building in this fall. There's a number of improvements are needed to ensure the space is ready to support staff and the community. And the commercial building, the nine-six-five-five building, will eventually serve as the permanent location for the CPD, the Public Works Capital Projects and Engineering Teams, and YFS. Happy to pause here for questions. And Aaron, I believe, our architectural consultant is also here to talk about the integration more, if you have questions.
One of, I think the main point that I wanted to make is, we've been out on having some conversations with the community about the PSM facility, and the number-one question I get is, where is the planning department going? We weren't able to announce it and explain how this was all going to work until we announced last week the acquisition of this building. So now I can say, the planning department is going to the nine-six-five-five building. Will be right next door to our customer service counter at the new facility, where we will also do our engagement around the permit work we do as a city.
Very good. So is there a further presentation on this, or Aaron is just available for questions?
That was it. We just wanted to make sure we connected the dots on how all of this is planned to work together.
Okay. Any questions, any discussion on that, council? There's no motion on that, that's just an update. Okay, so we get to the pro and con.
Yes, next, pro and con committee recruitment. Council, with your approval of a motion for us to prepare a bond ordinance, there are several other kind of housekeeping items we need to do to pull off a bond ordinance. And one of those is the, your direction to proceed with recruitment for the pro and con committee. You may remember us from the Parks Levy. We're going to, the city will solicit applicants from the committee to serve on the pro and con committees. It'll be similar to the recruitment process we do for board and commission recruitments, with recruitment announcements provided across multiple communication channels. The applications we receive between, with your motion now and July fifteenth, will be presented to the council on the July fifteenth meeting. And on that meeting, you will make appointments to each of the committees, the pro and the con committee. The committees will be comprised of a maximum of three individuals. And so we, I think in your packet, we have some examples of some of the recruitment language we'll use, looking for a motion to direct us to begin recruitment of the front of the committee.
Okay, so, council, it's a little unusual to have a pro and con committee established before we even have a first reading of a bond ordinance, but the city manager and I discussed this, and given the July fourth holiday and the timing of our next council meeting, we didn't want the public to have kind of a shortened timeline for getting applications in for the July fifteenth deadline. So we're going to get started a little early, if we can get a motion to direct the city manager to commence recruitment for pro and con committee to prepare the election materials for the voters' pamphlet.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. See clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Council, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Our next item of regular business is AB six-seven-zero-eight, interim regulations related to objective design review standards, House Bill twelve-ninety-three, and Title nineteen, MICC, second reading of ordinance number twenty-five C-eleven, and we welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This will be a relatively short presentation. We've got two follow-ups for you from first reading of the ordinance a couple weeks ago. One was a city council-directed item, and the second is one additional correction we'd like to make, a relatively minor item. To run through these for you is Principal Planner Adam Zach, who just popped on the screen. He's going to walk you through just a few slides.
Adam, you're on mute, or your audio's not coming through?
Let's see, is that better? Can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Great. So, as Jeff mentioned, this is the second reading of ordinance twenty-five C-eleven, which is an interim ordinance to amend the design standards to comply with recent changes to the state law. We first brief you on, we give you an initial briefing on April fifteenth to kind of go through some of the issues associated with compliance. We held the public hearing and the first reading at your last meeting on June third, and there have been two minor changes to the ordinance since that first reading. The first change was made during the first reading by a city council motion, and basically, this change clarified that affordable units shall be of a minimum size equal to the average size of market rate units for the same bedroom count. And then it provides an example. So this was approved by council motion at the last reading. The second change is a staff-proposed amendment to nineteen-twelve-zero-seven-zero B-six, which, the proposed change here is simply to strike the word sodium from this provision. So the new requirement would be lighting must use low-wattage, color-corrected light sources, which give more natural light. And the purpose for this proposal is just to get rid of that sodium clarification, because there may not be those sodium light sources currently available on the market. So really two pretty minor changes. Looking ahead at the next steps for this ordinance, if it's adopted tonight, this ordinance would become effective on June thirtieth, in time for the deadline established in the state law. And then, following adoption, and once these become effective, we'll begin working on the permanent regulations to replace these interim regulations, based on the work plan that's included in Exhibit A of the ordinance. Those would be next steps. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Looking to council for any questions. Not seeing any. Council, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five C-dash-eleven, amending Title nineteen of MICC to comply with HB twelve-ninety-three and RCW three dot six dot seven zero A dot six three zero on an interim basis and adopting a work plan for related studies and community engagement?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Any discussion? See clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB six-seven-one-three, transferring design review decision authority to the hearing examiner and dissolving the design commission, ordinance number twenty-five C-dash-fourteen, first reading and adoption. And we welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you again. This is related to the item that you just voted on. This is direction, bringing an ordinance back from your first meeting in June, to transfer this authority. And Adam's going to, again, run through just a few quick slides for you, and then turn it back over to the council.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Jeff. So this is the first reading of ordinance twenty-five C-fourteen, which would transfer design review authority to the hearing examiner and dissolve the design commission. As we just looked at, ordinance twenty-five C-eleven will adopt changes to comply with the state law related to our design standards. And you provided direction at the last meeting to come back with a, an ordinance that did two things, dissolve the design commission and transfer the design review authority to the hearing examiner at the same time that ordinance twenty-five C-eleven would become effective. So the attached ordinance with the agenda bill would do that by amending Title Three of the Mercer Island City Code to do those two things. Quick look at how it would do that. Essentially, all of Chapter three twenty-four would be repealed, and then replaced with the new section three thirty-four zero zero five, which does three things. It establishes that the hearing examiner will serve as the design commission for all of the quasi-judicial functions that were previously assigned to the design commission. So this would be holding public hearings or conducting those types of matters. And then, the second function, or the second feature of this section, is that all of the other functions that were assigned to the design commission that are not quasi-judicial are now delegated to the code official, which is the CPD director or designated, so city staff, would take over those non- quasi-judicial matters, the administrative review that's assigned to the design commission. And then finally, this ordinance would dissolve the design commission, the current membership.
Okay.
And there was a, sorry, just one more. There was a recommended motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading pursuant to your rules of procedures, which allows you to adopt an ordinance on first reading, provided you, the ordinance requires an effective date that would preclude a second reading. So that's this rules of procedure part. At this point, I'll turn it over to any questions.
Okay. With that, council, are there any questions? No. Just a quick question for city attorney. There's no need to waive city rules of procedure because of the caveat that Adam just gave us?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. There's no need to vote or waive the rules of procedure.
All right. Counsel, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five C-dash-fourteen at first reading pursuant to the city council rules of procedure six dot three C-three to delegate design review authority to the hearing examiner?
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Is there any discussion? See clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
And Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes. Our next item of regular business is AB six-six-nine-nine, briefing on the evaluation of a fee-in-lu program related to town center development. We welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas.
Final time this evening, thank you. Joining me for this is Deputy Director Allison Van Gorb. This is a work program item that council added to CPD's work program back in October of two thousand and twenty-four for this year. And there was also a budget allocation done in November last year to help fund some professional services for this. So Allison has a slightly longer presentation than what Adam has just run through a couple times, not too much longer, to brief you on where we're at with this, and hopefully, we're going to start embarking here on the actual work here shortly. So Allison, please take it away.
Okay, thank you. All right, so as Jeff was saying, the council directed this work last fall. In addition, the comprehensive plan that was adopted last November included a policy in the housing element that specifically referenced evaluating a fee-in-lu program. So this will be one of our first actions to implement that part of the comprehensive plan. Finally, we received some public comments during consideration of the code amendments that accompanied the comprehensive plan last fall, and those comments were from property owners in the town center. And one of the things they indicated was that there was some interest in a fee-in-lu program, because that may make development more feasible under the new regulations. We currently have affordable housing incentives in place in the town center. Those have been part of our town center code since two thousand and sixteen, and you may recall, they were recently updated as part of that code amendment that accompanied the comp plan. We kind of dialed up the requirements for affordable units in the larger town center buildings. So the requirement for three-story buildings remain the same at ten percent of the units, affordable to seventy percent AMI for rental housing, and ninety percent AMI for ownership housing. And then, for the taller buildings of four stories or greater, we increase that requirement to fifteen percent of the units, must be affordable at fifty percent AMI for rental housing, and eighty percent AMI for ownership. So this fee-in-lu would be an option that would allow a permit applicant to pay a fee in place of meeting a code requirement, and specifically for affordable housing here, that fee can be paid in place of all or a portion of those required affordable housing units. I think whether that's, you know, what portion that would be, is something that the council can provide policy direction on at a later time. And then, we'll be working with a consultant to set a fee that would compensate for the impact of the new development on the need for affordable housing, to kind of offset that impact. And then, the revenue generated from any in-lu fees would be placed into an affordable housing fund, and those funds would be used for future construction or preservation of affordable housing units. That could be done locally in Mercer Island, or it could be contributed to the Arch Housing Trust Fund for use anywhere in East King County. So as I said, we'll be doing an economic analysis with a consultant to help establish the fee. This is called a nexus study, and it evaluates the connection between new market rate housing development and the need for additional affordable housing. It'll help establish the maximum fee that developers could be charged to mitigate impacts of new development on affordable housing needs. And then, as a part of the council policy direction, you know, we can determine exactly where that fee should be set based on that analysis. The analysis will also look at market conditions and project feasibility to provide additional information in figuring out how to establish that fee. The goal here is to establish a fee that's both financially viable and legally defensible. In terms of scope of work, we're looking at a schedule that runs from now, when the council approves the scope, and would conclude at the end of the year in December. We'll be doing work over the summer with the consultant team on the economic analysis. We'll also be doing property owner outreach and researching programs in peer cities for information on effectiveness of those programs. We've added an option the council could approve by motion tonight to add a city council study session in September to provide additional policy direction on the structure of the program and the amount of the fee. Then we'll be preparing a code amendment for legislative review, first with the planning commission, and then the city council, hoping to wrap up that code amendment before the end of the year, along with a fee schedule amendment that would implement the fee. along with a fee schedule amendment that would implement the fee. As Jeff mentioned at the start, the council's already appropriated funds in the 2025-2026 budget. We don't believe any additional financial resources will be needed at this time. Of course, we'll be using staff and planning commission time as part of the project. So in terms of next steps, once the scope of work is approved, we'll commence work with the consultant team. And we have that option to come back to city council in September to touch base on policy direction. And we're looking to wrap this up before the end of the year. I've got a slide here with the initial recommendation from staff. And then Councilmember Weinberg had proposed a motion over email. And the city manager had also provided an alternative motion for your consideration. And I can take any questions.
Okay. Counsel, I'll open it up to questions. Is there any interest, learning more?
Can we see? Oh, there they are. Okay.
Did you want to see the motions?
They wanted to see the motions.
Yes. Ms. Van Ghorp, just a question. You know, we went through the housing code and the whatnot as part of the comp plan revision. And as various state regulations have required us to put in a certain amount of affordable housing, or rather to plan for a certain amount of affordable housing. And I think we comply with that now. Does offering this fee-in-lu program in any way jeopardize our compliance with those requirements? Or is it still considered planning for affordable housing even though it might not be all built here?
Yes. This is one of the tools that we included in the housing element that are part of the way that we will help provide affordable housing. It doesn't necessarily all need to be provided here locally. We're trying to address the regional countywide need for affordable housing. And so, you know, requiring units in projects here in Mercer Island is very helpful. In addition, providing funds to create housing in the region would also count towards the affordable housing need. And one of the advantages of this fee-in-lu is that we could potentially program that revenue that comes from the fees to projects that provide extremely and very low-income housing, the housing that's below 50% AMI, which is very difficult to fund and provide.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Becker.
Yeah, I'm just curious, in other jurisdictions that have implemented a fee-in-lu, whether most people like decide to go with the fee-in-lu? Or is it like actually a situation where some developers use the fee-in-lu and some people decide to stay with the affordable housing?
I think it really depends on the project and the specific context and costs of that project. It can often be more common that they choose to pay into the fee-in-lu. Depending on how the fee is set, that can be a little bit of a financial advantage for the project. Other times, you know, developers, depending on their financing and the structure of that, they could prefer to just provide it on-site and not have to pay that money up at the front end of the project when they're receiving their permits. So I think it's kind of a mixed bag, just depending on the housing type and all the financial things that go into their pro forma.
And, you know, when we think about our target, especially the units that are in the zero to 30 permanently supportive housing, the wraparound services that would be needed to really build that housing can't exist at a 15% scale in a 200-unit apartment. You really have to do a project like what we've seen with Arch and East Gate, you know, where they can really have a lot of supportive services wrapped around that. So, you know, it's not that every unit would require that, but there's a good portion of our target that is associated with a higher level of kind of support than what you'd see in a traditional rent subsidized unit. Okay. Counsel, I'm going to start with one of the first motions, which is to approve the scope of work for the reevaluation of fee-in-lu of affordable housing program and direct the city manager to commence work.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That's moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weiger. Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, I'm confused. How do we get to the study session piece of it?
That'll be the next motion. That'll be a separate motion.
Thank you.
Okay. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Councilmember Weinberg, do you want to take a stab at your motion?
Sure.
And then, you know, the absence of that passing, we would just be going to the city manager motion.
There's been a couple of motions, as you mentioned, the one that I sent an email and the one that the city manager has sent an email. I would actually like to make as my motion, the city manager's motion, with a one-word amendment, specifically adding the word "partial" before the word "fee." And I think that this would essentially allow us to meet with the intent of her motion and the intent of mine, which is to make sure that we're focusing on a partial fee and not a full fee-in-lu. So essentially, I move that per the text of the city manager's motion, I move to direct the staff to incorporate a study session into the scope of work for fall 2025, so that the city council may review the results from the NEXUS study and provide policy direction prior to drafting the partial fee-in-lu ordinance and commencing the legislative review process.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Looking for discussion. Councilmember Andrell.
Thanks. Well, I think by saying "partial," and I get where Ted's coming from, and that may be where we land, but that predetermines that it is going to be partial. And I'd like to leave it open for council to determine that it could be full. And so putting that guardrail on it right now is not appropriate. It may be where we come out, but I wouldn't support the insertion of the word "partial." Other than that, I would be great with the second motion.
Okay. You could amend the motion if you want.
I know, but I don't think it would be considered friendly.
Okay.
So if I can speak--
So it did not be unfriendly. Councilmember Weinberg.
I can speak in support of the motion. The purpose of my adding the single word "partial" to the motion was I want to ensure that there's at least some affordable housing units that are included in the future large developments on the island. I want to make sure that we have inclusionary zoning policy.
And in response to that, if I might just say, if you do that, you may guarantee that nothing gets built. And I would rather see a full fee-in-lu, maybe, going toward actually building affordable housing rather than disincenting developers from building housing on the island because they are required to do a certain number of affordable units and they just don't pencil out. I mean, if you've read the recent article that's been circulating on Nextdoor about, from Forbes, about why developers aren't building apartment buildings anymore, you will understand that even market-based, market-rate housing is challenging for developers to build based on cost. So, yeah, I'd rather see us be able to consider in the fall the option to direct all of the money to affordable housing someplace else rather than have it not being built here.
Okay. Very good. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I want to be careful. We don't put a conclusion on this before we get the study back. You know, talking with our colleagues from around the region, both in Seattle and other east side cities, as well as some developers, I think this is a situation where we don't know what we don't know. So I kind of want to have the study back and get the recommendations before we make a decision on what we think is the best path forward.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Becker.
Can, I mean, I guess I'm curious if there's an opinion on if this actually is prejudging this, because we're still saying that the point of this is we want to have a discussion about this before we see an ordinance. And so I guess we don't know what the ordinance is, so.
The text of the motion is prior to drafting the partial fee-in-lu ordinance. So it would be prescriptive in the sense that the ordinance, if this motion passes, could only be partial?
Okay. I mean, I guess what I'm seeing is we're not going to see an ordinance at the next meeting, though. We're going to see a--
Study session.
A study session where then we could discuss what it is and we could theoretically change it at that point and decide that we're issuing the ordinance. I was just curious if there was an assessment of if we are actually prejudging it or not. It's really my question.
I believe that you are placing a restriction on your future policy decision. Per Robert's Rules of Order, we would need to return with a fee-in-lu ordinance that is partial. That's not fully described, but I do think you are putting some guardrails on that future work. And counsel, since I have the microphone, I'll just say my concern is this. The recipes for this are not clear. They may be different for every type of project we see. We may do something for a, we may set a policy for a smaller development, a different policy for a larger. We just haven't gotten there yet. My concern and the reason I reached out to you today was after speaking with Jeff, we don't know what we don't know. That's why you commissioned a NEXUS study. And we're happy to come back to you and share those results. And we can have a really thoughtful policy discussion at that time.
Allison, can you tell me the definition of inclusionary zoning? Councilmember Weinberg made the assertion that he wants us to have inclusionary zoning, but do we in fact have inclusionary zoning?
Our policy is considered incentive zoning, which is similar to inclusionary, but slightly different in that there is an option to build smaller buildings that don't have a requirement for affordable housing.
Perfect.
So inclusionary means you must include affordable housing in any development.
And since we can do a by right two-story construction of, you know, a restaurant with some office space or something like that--
Yes.
You know, what we have is non-inclusionary zoning in our town center.
And, you know, it acts a lot like an inclusionary policy in that if people want to build an apartment building, those are typically more than three stories, and then they would have to include affordable housing. So it behaves somewhat similar to an inclusionary zoning policy, but it is technically an incentive zoning policy.
Excellent. Thanks for correcting the record there. Councilmember Weiger.
Yeah, I would just, I'd like to keep our options open because this is a very complicated space. And I think some help in September might be Jesse, having a builder or somebody from the Building Association show up to like give us the real world of what it would be to build something on Mercer Island, given the time it takes to get the permit, the funding you need to have, the carrying costs. Like, we all get different sources of information about what it costs to actually build a building on Mercer Island. And having somebody in the industry sort of lay that out and level set would be helpful as part of this fee-in-lu conversation. So it doesn't need to be a full presentation, but 10 or 15 minutes on Math 101 for what a developer faces to do anything anywhere on Mercer Island, never mind the region.
Excellent. Councilmember Reynolds.
I'd just like to get clarification from the city manager. If we had the motion as you had, the city manager had proposed it, I think I'm reading it that you would have the ability to propose something that was full or partial. Is that correct?
Actually, I'm one step back. We would present to you the results of the NEXUS study and the economic findings, so that then you could direct us, provide direction as a body on the drafting of the ordinance. And the reason that I propose that is it feels to me like it's really important to engage the city council before the staff set a policy direction and move it through the legislative process, which includes the Planning Commission. So we would come to you with findings, perhaps some recommendations or options, you know, even a menu. We haven't gotten there yet. Then you would set the policy direction.
And in particular, our policy direction could be for full or partial, or perhaps
Some--
partial, or short buildings and full.
Yeah, or some version thereof. Yes. We are remaining very open at this point. We work in affordable housing, but I won't say that we're experts in the fee-in-lu program. And that's why we're working with a consultant to help us advise you on this important policy work.
Excellent. All right. Councilmember Reynolds, sensing any hesitation on the second on the motion?
I'll let my second stand.
Okay. No friendly amendment to remove the word "prior"?
I--
Or "partial," I mean?
I'll move to amend the motion to remove the word "partial."
Okay. I'll second that. That will get us to the packets, city manager recommendation. All right. So we have an amendment to the motion on the floor. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Nay.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So the amended motion's on the floor. Any discussion prior to roll call?
And just to be clear, this is now exactly the city manager's--
That's right.
Perfect.
Okay. Not seeing any discussion. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Our next item of regular business is AB 6711, adoption of the 2026-2031 Transportation Improvement Program. We welcome Transportation Engineer Rebecca Corleano. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Nice and council members. My name is Rebecca Corleano and I'm the Transportation Engineer for the City of Mercer Island. Also here with me is the Public Works Team, who will be available to help answer questions at the end of the presentation. In total, we have five slides to share with you this evening, recapping changes to the TIP since our last meeting in April. During the April 15th council meeting, city staff presented the draft 2026-2031 TIP, and public hearing was held and continued through tonight. At the bottom of the slide, you can see where we are at for the TIP process, with council adoption of the TIP anticipated this evening. Since the TIP preview on April 15th, staff updated several transportation project budgets and timelines to align with the city's water supply pipeline project and to keep the street fund balance positive through 2029. All changes discussed in tonight's presentation are shown in blue text in Exhibit 3. Projects that were refined to align with the water supply pipeline project include Gallagher Hill Road overlay and sidewalk improvements, Southeast 40th Street overlay and sidewalk improvements, and Southeast 36th Street overlay. The remainder of the design and all construction is now planned to occur in 2026 for these projects, moving up the 2.9 million in street fund expenditures that were previously planned for 2027. Projects shifted out to maintain a positive street fund balance through 2029 are plotted in red on the screen and include West Mercer Way resurfacing, 78th Avenue Southeast overlay and sidewalk improvements, Southeast 24th Street overlay and sidewalk improvements, and West Mercer Way overlay. Notably, these arterial streets currently have a pavement condition index value in the fair to satisfactory range and will remain sufficient for another year. As you may recall, new pavement condition data will be collected in the fall of 2025, and this new data will help city staff prioritize the paving of these arterial streets. The recommended action is for city council to adopt the 2026-2031 TIP as shown in Exhibit 3 and authorize the resulting increase of 2.9 million in the street fund expenditure budget. This ends our presentation. We'd like to open it up for any questions and discussion.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Andrell.
I just wanted to say thank you, Rebecca, for a concise and clear presentation. And the written materials were great to get us ready for this agenda items. And I don't think, I've been in a meeting where you've presented before, so welcome. Maybe I missed it.
That's right. A new level of efficiency in the TIP. Counsel, is there a motion to adopt the 2026 through 2031 Transportation Improvement Program as shown in Exhibit 3 and authorize an increase of 2.904231 million in the street fund expenditures in 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Andrell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Any discussion? Not seeing any. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We move to other business and planning schedule. We welcome back city manager Jesse Bond.
Counsel, just acknowledging that July 1st, we will be bringing your first reading of a bond measure ordinance and the other items we discussed previously this evening. Second reading is on July 15th. Just want to make sure that we have full attendance for sure, the July 15th meeting. So if I could ask you to reach out to Andrea if you have any-- So if I could ask you to reach out to Andrea if you have any scheduling issues that night. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Excellent. All right. Councilmember absences. Any absences, upcoming absences for more? Nope? All right. Councilmember reports. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
I have nothing to report. Councilmember Wyker.
Nope. Nothing, thanks.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah. So the East Side Transportation Partnership met at Redmond City Hall last Friday. There were about 30 people in attendance, and each of the cities and counties represented gave a brief overview of their primary transportation-related projects and studies that we had in flight. They gave one for Mercer Island. Deanna Brewer and Aisha Dial from the Washington State Department of Transportation then gave a thorough demonstration of the Virtual Coordination Center web application that is used by many police, fire, emergency responders, and other partner agencies around the region, including Mercer Island Police Department. And the next open lunch is going to be on 12:00 PM this Saturday at Mio Posto. The address is 26017670 southeast. As always, everyone's welcome. It's an open agenda, news, sports, weather, humor, even questions about the city business. All I ask is that everyone shows their respects to the chef by ordering some food and/or beverage, and let me know if you're coming, so I can reserve a large enough table.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, a couple of things. So participated in an Arch Focus Group meeting last week. Quite interesting representatives from a number of cities around the region, primarily focused on how to make Arch more effective as they work on their strategic plan. And we talked a lot about increasing communication with the cities and also adding clarity to individual cities' funding responsibilities seem to be the main themes of the meeting. We also had a Parks and Rec Commission meeting just after the last council meeting, primarily devoted to a report from KCLS. Some good news coming out of that, that starting this fall, the library is going to return to being open seven days a week. And they also reported a number of interesting stats about library usage in 2024 that were